Need evidence. Upper notice.
The county board of supervisors, August fifteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places, posted on the county website on August fourth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in the legal newspaper, the week of August seventh, twenty twenty-three, published date of August ninth. In addition, on Friday, August fourth, twenty twenty-three, twelve twenty-four P. M., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. And the notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty-three. That complies with the open meetings law.
New. Roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Wardell.
Here.
Ryan Wood. Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pray.
Here.
Russ Arkand.
Here.
C. J. Simmons.
Here.
John Bonner Prize.
Here.
Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Enter chair, I am over approval of the agenda presented.
There'll be some changes in the agenda as presented.
Eight. Approval with the changes.
Well, we don't know what to change. I'll tell you what to change. Let's. Appreciate it. We're going to move under number eight. F. We have, we have to go into a closed session for the purpose of, um, conferring with some attorneys. We'll be doing that on conference, and we not real sure how long that'll take. It depends on, on your, uh, inquiries of them. So we'll have to, we'll have to do that. And after, right after the closed session comes back, we're going to go into the, a presentation so they, they don't have to sit any longer than they already are forced to, unfortunately. So with those changes in mind, if you.
Where's public comment in there then? In, in the man six and seven? Do you think it's staying the same then?
Public comment will stay the same.
Okay.
Then where are you moving now to?
F.
Where are you moving it to?
It'll move right after the public comment.
Eight A.
I move with that approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Over same side. Okay. Uh, need a motion on the matters for adoption.
I'll make a motion.
Crazy. Need a second.
Second.
Who said it?
Brad.
You're also.
Oh, Olson. Uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Over same side. Now we'll move into public comment as being, uh, I think there's, we have a control of some upstairs, and they'll be presented, uh, uh, in a rotation manner. We're going to allow three minutes per comment with a thirty-minute maximum. So whoever wants to comment, go ahead. You're all up there. Does anybody want to get up or?
She's calling them.
Never seen so many bashful people in all my life.
Say your name. And where you from? Please. Can they hear us? Claire.
Hi, I am Paulette Adair from Luck. From the very beginning, the Stour Seven Lakes Trail Plan has met the intent of the state and railroad M. O. U. allowing trails to be managed by the counties. Over the past fifteen years, boards have efficiently voted and passed multiple trail plans, ultimately approved and supported by the D. N. R., allowing safe, enjoyable recreation for a variety of user groups. The fact that equestrians are the most underserved group in our county, there has been two years of successful mixed-use trails, and absolutely no safety issues or damage to this beloved trail are now all being completely ignored. Yes, the Stour Trail is unfortunately involved into a much different situation. It has become evident that there are well-organized outside influences attempting to alter our traditional ways of managing trails in our county and ultimately the entire state. These apparently well-financed groups are not solely interested in the Stour Trail. It is evident they are actively trying to manipulate and intimidate local elected officials to vastly alter the ways state trails have historically been managed by the counties. Their purpose is to systematically eliminate all other user groups they deem incompatible with bike riding or walking, and restrict their access to railbed trails in our state. Left unchallenged, this judgment will cause a wave of complicated costly policy amendments for all counties in Wisconsin. This misjudged misguided judgment will have a much bigger implication than banning the underserved horse people from six weeks of peaceful riding on the Stour Trail. Our community needs our local elected officials to stand up for our freedom of choice. Our boards over the years have accomplished so much for the residents and visitors of Polk County. There has been so much effort, years of meetings, studies, and resources dedicated to this prior process, and we finally made positive progress. We, if we do not appeal, it will all be for nothing. We will never again have this opportunity, and more important will be the loss of all that has been invested. The freedom for our county boards, user groups, and communities to have a voice in the planning process of how their parks and trails are utilized will be gone. We are all understandably weary of the contentious environment these groups have created, but we are confident this judgment can be overturned. Continuing this fight will not be a cause of throwing good money after bad. You will be protecting the huge investments so many have already made. We urge you to make strong statement against these groups and this ruling. Please do not allow this judgment to go unchallenged. Who agrees with me here? Say yes.
Anyone else?
Something went did there?
You're silenced. We, we can't hear you. So hold on just a moment while we. Is there a, a.
Switch on the mic.
On the microphone?
You hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Kevin Marlet from the town of Clayton. Um, I am for the Stour Trail to be open for snowmobiling. Um, I'm just wondering if any of the board members were contacted by Judge Black and asking him what impact it would have to close the trail on any of their businesses or the residents in their districts. Um, I know it affects a lot of the snowmobile clubs. I think there's fourteen snowmobile clubs in Polk County. And the Stour is one of the main trails to the Amory Snowmobile Clubhouse and many other trails. Judge Black should have reached out to the snowmobile clubs since we are the ones that are impacted. I have only been involved in the snowmobile clubs for about two years now, and I'm amazed at all the work that goes into these snowmobile trails. It takes a long time to get a snowmobile trail established, working with landowners and everything else. It's not an easy process, and these people put a lot of work into these trails. And my thoughts, if this ruling is not overturned, I don't want any of my snowmobile or ATV registration or any of my county dollars going for any work on the Stour Trail. Thank you.
Think you cut it off again.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Natalia Doty, and I am the manager of Brothers Country Mart in Nye, Wisconsin. We are right off of the Stour Trail. I fully one hundred percent believe that the trail should be open to all, including snowmobiles. I have all of the documentation that proves how much business just the snowmobiles bring to our little tiny store. Without it, I, we probably wouldn't be doing half as good as we are right now. Not only is it bringing generations together, it's easy access for older generations that cannot ride in the ditch to get to a trail. They're able to ride there. All of the people that, um, have little children that are finally able to come and ride, they can go on an easy trail and be able to get to Amory and be able to go places. We are the only gas station that is the easiest access to get to on a main trail, and if you take that away, it creates problematic issues for all of the other towns for snowmobiles to get to those locations. Um, for November alone, we sold nine hundred and eighty-six gallons of premium. When the trails opened in December, we sold one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five gallons of premium. February or January, we sold two thousand six hundred and twenty gallons of premium alone. And I don't see that type of revenue coming in from people that are just walking on the trail or most of them just park in our parking lot and use our facilities and then go for a walk. So having the trail open is helping our business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Quite a statement.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Sarah Brink. I own Limitless Ranch just outside of Luck, Wisconsin. We've been here for five years. I'm also the therapeutic riding instructor for Rock Ridge Ranch and Retreat in Milltown. Um, both are therapeutic riding programs. I'm the instructor at both. Um, I guess my concern is this. I feel like since I've learned about this, I feel like one side has been misrepresented and bullied. And I'm a farmer. I don't have time to raise big groups and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and come to all of these things and try to support something that I think is about equality. Um, I represent quite a lot of special needs adults and children in this area. And to be able to go on a safe trail ride during equine therapy is really important. It's empowering. Our veterans come back, and they need our help with P. T. S. D. These rail beds are the safest place. We cannot ride on the roads. The roads are not safe. I myself have almost been hit multiple times. Um, and in keeping my kids that are with me safe, I have stood myself and my horses in front of cars that are speeding. Um, so the rail beds are a much better option. And this is my thing. I grew up in Stillwater. I rode the Gateway Trail for, since the time I was six until I was a graduate from high school. We rode with bikers, hikers, everybody else. There's food trucks on the trail now. People get along. We'd stop and talk to people. They love talking to us. They love talking to our horses. It was never a safety issue, and the footing did not get ruined. I've studied it at my farm. I would be willing to give you documentation of me riding my horses across limestone in all weather. And will it be, there be footprints? Yes, in certain weather. Is that any different than somebody on a mountain bike with a big fat tire going in the rain on soft surfaces? It's not. And I feel like the entitlement of the bikers and the hikers is getting out of hand. I, I like them. But why are they better than we are? You know? So that's all I have to say. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Josh.
Hi, I'm Josh, Clear Lake, Wisconsin.
It's fine.
We hear you.
I think it's on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm also in favor of keeping the Stour, uh, as it was approved by the county board, multi-use. Um, as a member of the Amory Snowmobile Club, we feel it's a, an important passage to get to Amory, and it connects Osceola to Amory. We've had several spur trails that have been developed in the last two years to connect, uh, the rest of the county. And we sure would appreciate your vote and chase that appeal. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, thanks for hearing these public comments tonight. Uh, I am that, uh, um, self-centered, um, wealthy outside influence that's interested in a trail that's open to everybody year-round.
What's your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Brooke Wallen, Bone Lake Town. Um, right now, uh, the Stour is open to everybody of all ages and all abilities, and I invite you to go out and utilize that trail. Our issue, for the most part, on this side of the room is separating incompatible uses. Uh, the very first plan approved by Polk County was a thirty-foot-wide dual trail that was paved on one side or non-motorized on one side, uh, and, uh, year-round motorsports on the other side. And I think we all knew that was not going to fly. That was a multimillion-dollar project. One estimate came in at about a million dollars a mile, considering the, the physical constraints of that trail. So that, that failed miserably. Um, and then we had another, uh, master plan for the Stour from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. And for some reason, the county board decided to vote against its own plan in October of twenty eighteen. Um, Supervisor Olson, who led the citizen advisory committee for the better part of two years, um, decided to vote against, uh, all the work that the public had done for two years in coming up with, uh, a master plan for that trail. Then the county, for some reason, started the planning process all over again from square one in twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. How much money are you guys going to spend on this trail? How, are you going to follow Supervisor Olson and others into bankruptcy? Or is there a cash cow somewhere that's just, um, that's funding all this? I don't really understand it. And, um, a, a couple hundred thousand dollars on legal expenses? I don't get it for a trail that right now is open to, to everybody. The, the experiment. Hey, shut up. Yeah, you guys don't talk while I'm talking. That's what you do.
Time is up. Your time is up.
I know. Should we have a chief deputy?
Anyone else?
Probably. I, I just think we should have law enforcement.
Does anyone else want to get up?
I do. Do you mind if I speak in here or should I go upstairs?
There's, there's, you have to sign in and get put on the list.
I was a few minutes late.
You go upstairs?
Yeah, they, there might still be.
Yeah, I was late. So I didn't get to sign in.
I think they're still up there and will sign you in.
They will? Okay.
So, yeah.
Does anyone else up there have anything to say?
The one lady from here is heading up there so she can speak.
Thirty minutes. She got nine. Even I could get up there. We're waiting for one misguided lady. She was down here. Yeah. All right.
He just makes it so bad for them.
You want to speak? Is somebody sure where the microphone is?
Good evening, Ann Bridget Murphy. I live in, on the south side of Bone Lake. Um, my family has lived on the, lived on Bone Lake and in Polk, Polk County since the thirties. I've had horses most of my life, and I really cherish the days that I'm able to ride my horse safely. Today, I'm asking you to revisit this issue. We all deserve a safe place to ride. If we cannot ride on the trails, we will be forced to ride on the roads. And please note, horses have the right of way on all roads in the state of Wisconsin. I can ride on different trails, but I prefer to spend my money in the community that I live. I have brought property, pay property taxes. I currently buy hay, grain in Polk County. I have purchased multiple trail passes, and I believe the right thing to do is to allow horses on all the trails in the county. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else? All right, we're closing the public comment. And according to the adjustment of the, of the agenda, we'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session. For the purpose of litigating, uh, let a, let a, let a gator's information for us.
Go into clothes.
You have the numbers?
You have the numbers?
Which one is it? Nineteen eighty-five what?
One G.
Okay.
Motion is in second. Do you have it? Okay. Now roll call.
Uh, Lalié-Pray?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Russ Arkand. C. J. Simmons.
Yes.
John Bonner Prize.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wardell.
Yes.
Ryan Wood.
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
And Amy Middleton.
Yes.
And I would just make an announcement before we shut off the recording. Any folks who are up in the other room who want to listen to what happens after the closed session, they're certainly welcome to stay. I can't guarantee this might be very short closed session. It might be a, a little bit extended, so I apologize. Same thing for anybody in the room that, uh, is going to leave during the closed session because they're not a part of the closed session. Please be patient with us. We apologize.
After, we want to discuss a little bit and make some, uh, motion in reference to our.
Before, uh, we do that, the sheriff, who could not be here, wanted to share, um, his thoughts. And I don't know, Don, if you wanted to speak to it, I was just going to read it.
I think you could just.
Okay, let me, let me pull it up.
I guess I don't understand what you're trying to say.
So I just wanted to read, um, this, because I presume you wanted to act on what we just went into closed session before you go, or did you want to do that and then?
In a discussion on a motion to do something, that might be appropriate location for that comment, if that's what it is. I don't know what you're talking.
Were you going to allow the presentations be, before?
No, I thought we would have a motion and then.
I just wanted to make.
Okay. Expedite this thing. You know, otherwise we'd talk about five hundred things without a motion.
So we want to get this one done.
I want to.
So I'll make the motion to, to do the stay and the appeal.
And now there was.
And the, uh, the stay. There's three things, wasn't it?
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Reconsider.
And the appeal.
And the appeal. Both straight.
All right, have we got that straight now? That's to reconsider.
Second that.
You want to read it back?
Yeah, it's the motion to, um, do the stay, the appeal, and the reconsideration.
Okay, is that appropriate, counselor?
It is.
It is. Yep.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Second is made by CJ. Did you do that? Oh.
Sorry.
All right. A motion made in second. Any discussion on that?
I have a question for, just for clarity. So Nalia, can you just clarify how that goes now? So it's the motion for reconsideration?
Yes.
And what was the other one besides appeal?
Stay.
The rest.
Request. So stay, is, is there an order to this?
I think there, that Matt indicated it was going to be simultaneous, more or less. Um, motion for reconsideration, request for stay, and notice of appeal, all within short order. The notice of appeal is what allows us to hold on to that as the option.
Okay, now is your comment that you've got, that you want to make, uh, appropriate at this point?
Yes, this is a letter. The sheriff could not be here today, and he, uh, asked me to share this. Uh, this is dated August ninth, uh, to the Polk County Board of Supervisors to whom it may concern. I was made aware that the Stour Trail Plan that permitted snowmobile and equestrian use was stopped by a court decision. I testified in those hearings on the safety aspects of the trail. I also personally went to see the trail in use during equestrian and snowmobile season to ensure the trail was safe. I am extremely disappointed in the court's findings. We just had one of the longest snowmobile seasons with heavy traffic on the trail with a very positive safety record. With the new court decision, I now have concerns about the trail. With two seasons of use by the above-mentioned user groups, it will be very difficult to keep those users off the trail. With changes in any rule, there needs to be time to educate the public about the changes. I support an appeal of the court's decision or an injunction to keep the trail as it, it is, as it has been for the past two, two seasons. If the decision is to stand, then it is my opinion the entire trail should be closed to all users to avoid any conflicts and safety issues that may arise. Sincerely, Brent Walk, Sheriff.
Okay, that, uh, that motion kind of satisfies his problem and that in my mind. Okay, with that, any other comments on the motion?
Roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote.
Hey, does everybody understand the motion on the floor?
Yep. Okay.
Uh, Russ Arkand.
Yes.
C. J. Simmons.
Yes.
John Bonner Prize.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wardell.
No.
Ryan Wood.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
No.
Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
No.
Denise Lalié-Pray.
No.
Nine to five. Nine yeses and five no's.
Pass. Moving on, we will now listen to the presentation. If I still got this straight after. Changed it. Which one?
Six A and B.
No, we were gonna move.
Mary did that.
We were gonna do eleven.
Okay, I just wanted to.
We're, no, we.
I didn't work it off.
We're gonna do number eleven now, aren't we?
Somebody, I, I think according to our original, we are now going to eleven after the close.
Yep.
And there, that's our recognition of child support awareness month. First, and then we will go to the presentation from Scott Allen regarding West Central. Go ahead.
Which one?
Child support?
Child support.
Oh, um, I just asked that that be placed on this agenda. It was also on the Human Services
Right.
Board Agenda. This is Child Support Awareness Month. Um, I wanted to speak to what child support does. Not only do they ensure that, or try to ensure that children are supported uh, by both parents, at least financially, if not emotionally. We also help establish paternity. We also reach out when a parent is on, um, any type of, certain types of aid, certain types of, uh, public assistance to make sure that the other absent parent, if there is one, is contributing to that household. Uh, in Polk County, we have seventy-two different counties and tribes that have their own child support agencies. And Polk County, uh, over the last several years has become one of the top performing child support uh, counties. And so I just wanted to, uh, share that and ask that everybody recognize that this is Child Support Awareness Month. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have a presentation from Scott Allen regarding the West Central. And, uh, thank you for your patience for us.
Thank you, thank you for your patience with, with me and with our business fund manager, Toby Lemahue, who's, I'll be presenting to you here tonight.
Both the same.
Your practice is dead, so that's right. All right. Uh, thank you again. Again, my name is Scott Allen. I'm the new executive director for West Central Scottsdale Regional Planning Commission, your seven-county Regional Planning Commission, uh, representing again seven counties, including Polk County, uh, started, uh, just, uh, three months ago. Taken over for, uh, longstanding and comparable Lynn Nelson. So if you know Lynn and her work, um, taking over, uh, from her. Uh, prior to that, I worked, uh, the city of Eau Claire for a few years. And prior to that, I was down in the Kansas City area. And prior to that, there's a lot of prior to that's when you get to this, uh, stage of your career. I was at the city of Marshfield, but, uh, born and raised in Wausau, so, uh, Wisconsinite, uh, through and through. With that, uh, just a quick summary and introduction for those of you who may be unaware of what the regional planning commissions do. Uh, regional planning commissions have been around, uh, the state of Wisconsin for over fifty years now. Uh, they were created back in nineteen seventy-one, uh, to handle all the items you see there on the screen. Uh, addressing community planning, demographics, economic development, grants, mapping, natural resources, planning, uh, public administration, transportation. On the next slide. There are nine regional planning commissions in the state of Wisconsin. Uh, they're listed here alphabetically, so number nine is West Central Regional Planning. Uh, you can see all the different, uh, counties that are members, uh, identified there, uh, of their respective regional uh, planning commissions. So, uh, just north of us in Burnett County, uh, is adjacent Regional Planning Commission, uh, Northwest Regional Planning Commission. So, uh, with Alglan, next slide. So for West Central Regional Planning, it is governed by twenty-one members. Appointments are made by the seven county boards with three per county. So that's how you get to the number twenty-one. There's also an executive committee that consists of one appointment per county, so seven-member executive committee. The next slide. Can see here, uh, the seven counties that are represented in West Central Regional Planning. Uh, alphabetically, Barron County, Chippewa, Clark, Dunn, Eau Claire, Polk and St. Croix. And so for Polk County, uh, welcome, uh, new supervisor Jeremy Hall, uh, replacing, uh, Sharon Kelly. Uh, both on the county board, but also on the Regional Planning Commission. Uh, your economic development, uh, corporation, EDC Director Terry Howard and Supervisor Lali Pray. Uh, so thank you for your service to the commission. The next slide. There are now fifteen staff members, uh, for West Central Regional Planning, uh, grew by one senior planner uh, this, uh, current year and, uh, seen a lot of growth in projects and, uh, support to the member counties. So what is the overall goal of Regional Planning Commission? Now, we assist units of government in planning for physical, social and economic development needs of the region. Uh, we do this basically in three ways. We serve as a coordinated organization, uh, between federal, state, local governments. Uh, we assist units of government at, uh, all those levels, uh, working at issues that occur at a regional level. Uh, we provide technical assistance, vice and services directly to those individual units of government. Again, not just to, uh, each of the counties, but towns, villages, cities within them. Go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, services can be summarized in these four general areas: economic development, transportation, community development, and conservation and mapping. And how do we do those in each of those categories? In economic development, you see the list here in terms of some of those types of, uh, activities we participate in. Uh, one of those is, uh, county economic and population profiles in your folder. So hopefully everybody does have, uh, one of these folders. They do have one extra. It may be, but, uh, the left side in the back is an economic profile that we provide for each of the counties, uh, each year. So, uh, that's it's a little bit out of date, but it's from the early part of twenty twenty-three. We also provide, uh, community profiles that we can provide for, uh, a large portion of the, uh, communities within each county, primarily the villages and cities. Uh, in terms of transportation, again, one of the newer efforts we've been taking out the last few years is safe routes to school plans. Uh, city of Amory's, uh, recently taken, uh, that on. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about that here shortly. On the next slide. Community development, conservation, mapping are two of the other kind of key areas. Community development is kind of the biggest one. Uh, this is where we kind of help, uh, kind of fill the gap, help out with, uh, communities that need some more of that professional, uh, traditional kind of planning services as you see here, uh, listed. Uh, one of those really focused on a county level would be hazard mitigation planning, as well as outdoor recreation plans. Uh, in terms of conservation and mapping, we, we, we focus somewhat on water quality and sustainability, but also lake management plans. We did one, uh, for Staples Lake, uh, last year. We'll talk about the year shortly. So I'll close my comments. The next slide. Uh, with some of the projects and programs that occurred last year and kind of the first half of this year. Turnover to Toby to talk about the Regional Business Fund. Uh, just kind of going through this list here quickly, uh, we provided administration of the Main Street bounce back program, kind of a post-COVID, uh, grant, um, opportunity for, uh, organizations, businesses in the region. Uh, ten thousand dollar grants that were awarded to eight hundred and sixty organizations in the region for eight point six million dollars. Included a hundred and sixteen in Polk County alone, so over one point one million dollars, uh, invested there. We participated in the West Central Wisconsin Rail Coalition, supporting future pasture rail service in the region, as well as the broadband implementation group, provide administration for that group. And again, as I mentioned, the economic profiles, it's in your folder. As well as, uh, this June, we provided, um, uh, hosted downtown building renovation workshop, really focused on, uh, what, uh, businesses and communities can do to help, uh, actually physically renovate buildings in their downtowns. And that, one of those occurred in Clear Lake in June. Uh, the other one was in Owen in Clark County, uh, that same week. We prepared several successful grant applications, uh, here in Polk County, uh, including, uh, bike and ped plan, uh, hazard mitigation plan, funding, uh, surface water grant program funding for that lake management plan for Staples Lake. And then again, as a result of that, we helped prepare or are preparing, uh, those plans, uh, well as being a bike and ped plan is a twenty twenty-four project. So, uh, we have some projects lined up as well. As the last one on the list here is beginning an update of the Polk County Farmland Preservation Plan. So that's, uh, just getting underway as well. So, have some, we'll be back, uh, we'll be back here, um, throughout, uh, twenty twenty-four, looking at the bike and ped plan, the farmland preservation plan. And then rounding out those, uh, second to last two, as I mentioned, safe routes to school plan. We had, uh, Village of Osceola, Amory. We did, uh, plans for those and then, uh, helped secure implementation funding to create three what they call a traffic calming kits around schools. And the first demonstration site in the region was actually in, uh, city of Amory. So, those are some successful projects we wanted to highlight as a result of your, uh, membership, participation with the regional planning. And with that, I'll turn over to Toby to talk about the Regional Business Fund.
Hello, um, I'm Toby Lemahue. I just have a few slides to go through. I'm the fund manager at the Regional Planning Commission. Um, and most of my time is spent on the contract that the Regional Planning Commission has with the nonprofit Regional Business Fund. Um, the Regional Planning Commission created the nonprofit five oh one C six Regional Business Fund back in nineteen ninety-five to administer business revolving loan funds. Um, our programs do not compete with the banks or the credit unions, but rather we offer a public source of financing to businesses if and when they can't get financing from a bank or a credit union. Um, we have a separate nonprofit, uh, board of directors. So there's nine members made up of, uh, one person from each of the seven counties plus two more. So, uh, we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so like I mentioned, um, the Regional Business Fund offers low-interest loans to businesses. Um, again, not competing with those banks or credit unions. Um, you're going to find all, a lot more information than I'm going to, I'm not going to go through this whole slide. Uh, this is a brochure that you can reference. We also have an annual report. We have a website. Um, but if you also just want to contact us, you can always call us to talk about your financing need, your business financing need. But we can really provide funds for any sort of, um, project that a business has. It could be land acquisition, building acquisition, renovations, construction, um, working capital even for inventory. A lot of startup companies come to us too, to access capital. Um, so I won't go, again, go through all the details, but again, reference, um, that you can contact us. Um, we'll go to the next slide, please. Um, since inception of the Regional Business Fund, we've assisted over a hundred and fifty businesses, including sixty-nine startups with over seven point seven million dollars in financing, um, just in Polk County alone. There's some other metrics there for you, um, to look at. Um, some recent projects, there's also a couple of handouts in your packet that show kind of all the loans that we've closed last year, um, and then year-to-date through, I think it's just through June of this year. Um, this information is also on our website. If you ever care to see in past years, it'd be previous to that. But some recent projects that we've helped with funding, um, are The Wild Violet and Osceola, Village Pizzeria in Amory, Wisconsin Lakes Area Marine and Powersports in Milltown, Eagles Lounge in Balsam Lake, Treasure Alley in Osceola, Hendrix Chiropractic in Milltown, Studio, Studio A Salon Spa in Osceola, Precision Interiors in Town of Blackbrook and Ravelling Companies in Clear Lake. Uh, next slide. And then just to highlight a little bit more about this one, um, Amory, or in Amory, um, Amanda and Joshua Whiting, uh, purchased the business and property located at, um, one eighteen Keller Avenue North in downtown, which is obviously operating as the Amory Theater. Um, they converted the theater back to its original use of showing, uh, different, uh, high-quality movies. And they also transformed the front of the building into a coffee shop. Um, in conjunction with bank financing with this project, the Regional Business Fund helped out with a thirty thousand dollar revolving loan fund to assist with, um, purchase of equipment and some renovations that they needed. And then in conjunction with that, we also did a facade loan. So I just want to do a plug on that product here real quick. That's a one percent interest rate to downtown buildings to renovate the exterior, um, fronts of those buildings or those facades. Now we can go up to sixty thousand dollars with those loans at, again, at one percent. Um, I, so you can see the before and after of this renovation. I do understand now that this, um, business is up for sale again, but in any case, we did help them with that financing. And maybe we will help the future owner with financing for that acquisition. Um, next slide. Um, and then just before I leave, I just want to recognize the valuable contributions of the Polk County citizens um, that serve on both our board and our, uh, loan committee. We have loan committees throughout all of our region. Um, so first of all, to recognize the Regional Business Fund Board Member from Polk County, Aaron Mork. Um, so thank him for him, his service. And then our Polk County Loan Committee Members, Ned Albert, Kirk Anderson, Aaron Mork again, Kim O'Connell, um, Jeff Reed and Devin Swanberg. Devin's, um, just new to the board or to that committee. Um, and also a thank you to Terry Howard. He acts as our boots on the ground to help, um, when he's talking to businesses in the, in Polk County to make sure that they know about our services and our products that we offer, uh, at the Regional Business Fund. So I thank you to him as well. Um, so with that, I think Scott and I would be willing to answer any questions that you have either on the Regional Planning Commission or the Regional Business Fund.
Any questions? Go ahead, Brett.
So future passenger rail service, you were speaking of. Just wondering, I mean, it isn't financially feasible in Minneapolis-St. Paul. How is it, how is it feasible in Northwest Wisconsin and rural areas?
Great question. That's why, you know, we're, we're supporting that, uh, discussion. So there's that coalition. So we're, uh, we're just helping kind of administer that discussion to happen. And, uh, yeah, hopefully some additional discussion will happen that will, um, make a little bit more fiscal sense moving forward. Uh, admittedly so, it's been a little bit since, uh, that, that group has met. I think they try to meet, uh, quarterly, at least, uh, twice a year. And, uh, again, we're just trying to, uh, support that conversation.
Anyone else?
Very good. Appreciate your, uh, attention and your membership. Thanks so much again.
Thank you.
Okay, now. On, hopefully. Find out where we are. We're now at the point where I'm going to finally introduce Jeremy Hall. Been voting already and things that we don't know how he did actually, but didn't pay much attention. We had a, uh, a committee that, uh, that chose Jeremy out of, uh, other candidates. He seemed to fit the bill, uh, exceptionally well. The other candidates were very good too. And I hope they don't lose interest in the county as a result of not being appointed to this, this particular position. But, uh, I'd like to, at this time, have Jeremy stand up and give us a little bit of information about, uh, and I know there's a lot of information about what he does as a young man. So, uh, but, uh, just let us know what, what your interests have been and what you're doing and the things that you're achieving are kind of amazing to me, so.
Not really. So, uh, well, I grew up in Sacred Falls. Um, I have an older brother and a younger sister. Uh, we graduated from Sacred Falls High School. I lived, uh, help houses down from Nate's wife, so, um, Ryan, sorry. Oh, sorry, Ryan. Um, anyways, um, I live in the township of St. Curry now, just north of Menards with my wife and three kids. Um, we have a nine-year-old, a seven-year-old and a five-week-old. So, uh, we're kind of busy doing that. Um, I own a property management business in the county, um, specializing in rentals in the area and maintenance and, uh, outdoor services for those properties. And then I work for a fire department in the cities full-time, so. Yeah, I'm on the town of St. Curry Falls Board. Been on there for four years. And, uh, looking to see what I can do here.
Okay, welcome Jeremy, please. Thanks, Jeremy. Nice to have you around. You always need a smooth hit. Now we'll move on to the resolutions as presented, uh, thirty-three, twenty-three on a fee schedule.
Yes, Don, our, uh, General Government Director, to give us a, an update or a review of our fee schedule.
Okay.
Thank you, Vincent, Joe Luke. In your packet, if you go to, I think it's page thirteen, you'll see a proposed fee schedule. Written budget process. And one of the first steps for the board, uh, is to review and, uh, approve a fee schedule. What you've got here, if you'll look at some of the detail on the far left, you've got it in front of you, you'll see that there's a type of fee by department listed under each of the, uh, governing committees. The twenty twenty-two fee rate, the twenty-three fee rate, what we're proposing. And if you go all the way to the far right, you'll see an increase or a decrease if one of those exists. And these are redlined for you, so they're easy enough to identify. Um, when we looked at the When we looked at the changes from 22 to 23, from the last budget year to the current budget year, and we were experiencing inflation, more expensive to run the county. Very few of our, proportionally few of our fees were raised, about, uh, about 16%. So CPI for that year is about 8.3, 8.5%. In the current year, it's running about five, although it's diminishing down quite low actually right now. But what we did is we asked our departments, if you haven't raised fees and they're not statutorily set, go back and look at them. We're required to have fees that are in line with the cost of delivery. So we, we're not interested in exceeding the cost of delivery. But if you haven't adjusted fees due to cost of delivery in a while, and they're not statutorily set, please look at them. And so our departments went back and did that. Some had, some had already raised their fees. We didn't ask them to do anything else. Some had lowered fees. But the, the net changes are over there on the far right for your consideration. So that's how we got to where we are today. You've got the schedule in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the proposed fee schedule.
And this is the one that's being proposed and?
Yes, sir.
This is the final one?
Well, if I could.
No changes.
So maybe a little background of where it's gone before it's gone to each of the governing committees and to the general government. So it is before you.
Right. Kim?
How come the clerk of courts, are those all set? None of those, there's three pages of no raising any of that.
That's all statutory. Statutory, yep.
Okay. Paper service everything is, huh?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions? Brett?
So cost of delivery you said. So when I look at the general government, uh, CJCC. Is, is that our cost of delivering? I mean, we're, we're bringing in a total of $16,650 in 2024. Is that our cost of delivery? I'm just wondering why if our cost of delivery is higher than that, why we haven't bumped that up to cost of delivery or actual cost of the program?
Right. So we made a request to departments to look at the respective fees. We didn't dictate an increase. And that means there's likely managerial discretion in some of these cases. In particular, I asked the question about the CJCC fees. And the CJCC coordinator said they were in line with other counties' fees. And there were some complexities about raising fees in this particular year. So I think there are cases where fees weren't raised. And as General Government Director, a person interested in increasing revenue for the county and reducing expense, I would like to see fees raised when they can be fairly, uh, be fairly done. I wasn't, I didn't press the particular issue there because I thought the manager had a reasonable explanation for not raising.
I guess I struggle with, we're, we're raising fees everywhere except there it is, the ones that are costing us a lot of money from the sheriff's department. We're not raising fees on them, but that's just the first of many questions. Public safety. So I don't, I got, I got mine from the, uh, General Government. So we're not raising, we're, we're not raising fees on counseling of repeat offenders or anything like that through the sheriff's department or Corporation Council, or not Corporation Council, but Health and Human Services, that type of thing at all.
Uh, again, we made the request of department directors and division directors to examine the fees and we didn't stipulate that they must do so. Then some managerial discretion involved.
So Health and Human Services were raising the, the meal fee from 10 to 12.
At ADRC, sir?
Uh, yeah. So while a lot of people call, say they get a lot of calls, this is the only one that ever has kind of rang my phone off of people who can't afford the $10 even. And yet now we're going to raise it to $12, which is considerably more than 5%. We're raising the fees on our veterans to drive them around $50. We're raising lots of new mileage fees over there. And, and I guess we're, you know, in a few minutes, we're going to be looking at adding people to ADRC and how is it that we want to do all these things for people and yet now we're going to, we're going to charge more to do it. I, I guess, and anybody environmental services knows I hate fees, period. So I just look at this and think we're raising fees on some of the less fortunate in our county. Um, and once again, we're putting this on the backs of, of people who maybe can't afford it. And I just, I think that's unfortunate. And we've looked at this from, you know, the 30,000-foot view. I think we should be looking at it from the three-foot view and, and seeing what's actually going to affect people. And I think we're just there again, we're, we're, we're running this through. And if it passes like this, we're going to be put, and you can say $2 don't mean nothing, but if I don't have the $2, it means everything. And so there again, the people that, that are the least fortunate were putting this on their backs. And, and I just think that's a horrible place for a county board to be. I don't see anywhere in any of this where we've tried to save money administratively in, in cost cuts. You know, as somebody who used to milk cows, I, I don't get to decide, I didn't get to decide when I got paid. I got paid. And then you made it work. And, and I think that's what the county should do. I think the county should tighten its belt. All of these fees is going to bring almost nothing in the scheme of things into the county. You know, we, we're raising the fees on mines. We have one or two mines in the county. You know, it looks good on paper that we're raising the fees, but it's one or two. It means absolutely nothing. So as always, I'm, I'm against raising fees. I say, go find it somewhere else. And my last question is, if all of these fees go through, how much money are we going to, extra money are we going to bring in?
Well, sir, uh, the estimated revenues for some fees are calculated, uh, in the sort of the middle of the right column. And so some departments have done a great job of tracking their projected revenue here and others have not. And that's something we could do a better job of in the future. Budgetarily, uh, about half a million dollars is assigned to the fees category for a year, but that doesn't include revenue that is brought in through fees. For instance, the fees that are associated with GAM don't go into the fee account. And that's just accounting principles, which I don't control. If it would help, you raised some good questions about the fees related to some of the, uh, units of government. I had an extensive conversation with Laura Wagner today about the fees and ADRC. And, and a couple of them jumped off the page to me too. The, the $2 increase from $10 to $12 for folks who weren't part of the program, weren't, are on a waiting list and aren't actually part of the program, so they're not actually subsidized. So Laura was able to explain to me why that fee needed to go from $10 to $12. When I asked her the question, I saw the veterans bus at $50 a ride and I, what that's, you know, that jumped off the page to me, just as it did to you for sure. And Laura said, well, we bought a new bus last year and that's the cost of delivery. We negotiated that with Andy down in Veteran Services Office. So, um, and we, we could talk about the mileage rate. Some of those are really just reflective of the IRS and their increases each year. But I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to share that when we see fees that go up and if they don't make sense to the General Government Director, the General Government Director asked the questions. But we didn't go into this wanting to tell department and division directors, you need to raise your fees. That is not what we did. I think we had some appropriate responses. Is there more work to do? Absolutely. I would love to know. I would love to have revenue projections for all of the fees on here and I don't yet. So there's lots we can change for sure.
I think you did a great job, Don. I think most, I've talked to a few other people, most fees were very light, it was a hundred bucks. And we got a bargain in 95 in Polk County.
Any more questions?
That's 25 bucks.
Any more comments or questions?
Can we change that meal one? Does it have to go up that $2? So it's 20%. So does it have to go up? Can we say less?
He, it probably doesn't. I don't want to answer for you, but he just explained to us why the people who made that decision, the department heads made that decision. As I said, did you, did, for that one in particular?
Case, I mean, I, the experts actually in the room, but, uh, that's to recover our costs. That's all we're trying to do with that particular fee. And that's all we can do according to our financial policies. It's my job to make sure we're doing that and no more. And I, I have reason to believe that in this case, and I'm, we may have missed some, but certainly in that case, we did our due diligence to make sure that we weren't charging more than we should.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just say too, that there has been a bias on my part and, and our staff's part over the years since I've been here to keep fees down. And so that $10 to $12, I don't know this, but I'm guessing in many cases, we had several of these fees that had not increased in several years. And so maybe after several years of no increases, trying to keep things down, sometimes you bump it up and maybe it's more than the 5% that we consider. So.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept resolution 3323 as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept resolution 3323 on the fee schedule. Any more discussion? All in favor? Oh. Yes. The motion on resolution 3423 to lobby broadband. There was some comment at General Government. I suppose we'll get some. Uh, anybody want to make a motion and then discuss it? That also moves to accept resolution 3423.
Second.
Seconded by whom?
Maybe.
We all in favor? Or wait a minute. Talk about the discussion and ask for the thing. I'd like a little discussion on it if there's anything that's worth discussing.
I do.
Go ahead.
I was the one you're talking about.
Yes, I know that. Yes.
Okay, I, I think, uh, county board has no right to interfere with the rights of the people that own their land. I'm involved in one of these right now. And the people should maintain their right to control their property no matter who has property behind them. Hey, we live in a world where you can get internet on a, what do you call it?
Tower.
Well, a tower or a.
Skylake.
Yeah, there we go. Or a satellite, you know, I mean, you know, I think this is the kind of thing that gets county boards in trouble. I don't think they had, we have a right to do this. And I'm certainly against us supporting, I realize it's just going to the state and recommend, but I do not support taking away the rights of people that own land in Polk County. I'm living it. Have for a few years.
Good point.
I have a question. Maybe it's for Malia.
Now, anybody else have a discussion? Go ahead.
Would, would this be considered eminent domain? That you've taken somebody's use in that?
Just like highway right of way. You know, it's, it's like.
But this is private.
No, so this would not be a taking. This would not be a taking. What this is saying is that high-speed internet is becoming like electricity, like running water, like something you need to function. And if you live at the end of a road and there's 47 houses in front of you, but it's a shared private road, any one of those 46 households could block your ability to have high-speed internet when it has no impact on, it's underground. I mean, it's not like we're putting up some kind of big issue. So that, that's what this is. It is not a taking, so it's not eminent domain. It's simply saying, hey, state legislature, can you treat high-speed internet like, like something else like?
But they sell those and these stuff. So let's say I want gas or power. I get it and they decide, okay, they're coming in another way. That easement's there for life. They can sell that 10-foot easement to six other entities who wants to bury or use it, to do whatever they want to.
Not if the legislature says they can't. It's only.
Well, that's, that's part of it.
So, so that's, this is just a lobbying resolution and it was at the request of the think tank group about expanding broadband.
If I may give just a quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
History of it. And Polk County four years ago made this a priority, actually a little after, before, not quite four years, but we started working on it four, four and a half years ago. And as a result, I'm proud to say that this county has jumped ahead of other counties in, in the state by far, as far as getting cable in the ground and getting organized. Uh, at a recent stakeholder meeting where people came in and we said, what are the issues? How do we reach our goal of priority of getting high-speed internet to everybody that wants it? And we asked, what are some of the things that are obstacles to getting this done? And one that came up from several different people and companies and individuals was the idea of the private road. The purpose of this is not to take away land rights. The purpose of this, I think because of our role as a leader in this area is to say we're recognizing there's an issue out there. Because we have people throughout the county who cannot get high-speed internet. Their one option to get that fiber optic cable and we've got it over here on, I think it's, uh, Long Lake. We've got it over near Pipe Lake. And we've got it on other private Deer Lake and some other streets. Nobody wants to take property rights, but we wanted to make a point to the legislature, this is an issue. If you want to give high-speed internet to everybody, you need to take a look at this and consider, is this something that could be looked at like a utility? We're not going to do this, right? We're just saying this is the conversation that needs to get started. And that's, you know, whether or not you like it or not, it, we can.
Hopefully the legislators will resolve it.
Right.
Is what you're saying.
So there's nothing binding in this?
No, it's a, this is a good one. Go ahead, Dan.
I think from my seat in house, we have to be real careful in taking individual rights away from landowners. And I understand where you're coming from. I understand the want for it, but if you were born and raised in Polk County and happened to live at the end of that road, and now when the age of time, well, people are working from home and the fact that you have the right to that access and to that land, and now 19 people down the road behind you now are all working from home and that nice little place that you had peaceful before is no longer peaceful because there's 55 vehicles driving by every day because they're working from home. So I do think you're at risk of taking personal rights away from people by legislating how you can access personal property for personal gain to somebody else. So I think we need to be real careful of that.
It's one of the reasons I never ran for assembly. Anybody else?
Just one more comment.
Go ahead.
Where does it stop? Okay. You know, I'm fighting it now, but where does it stop? The state going to say, no, you can't stop that. I bought land because I wanted it to be just like you're talking about. Keep quiet, peaceful, everything else, you know? The guy on the end now wants to build a house and run this stuff. Hey, that's not what we agreed to, you know, when we bought land together. So, no.
Roll call vote, please.
Any more conversation on that? On the resolution? Okay. Any question, roll call.
So we have the motion to approve resolution 3423 to grant broadband access on private roads. And we're starting with CJ Simmons.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Oh.
Brad Olson.
No.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Warndale.
No.
Ryan Wood.
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc.
No.
Dan Ruck.
No.
Barbara McAfee.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall.
No.
Kim O'Connell.
No.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Denise Laliapre.
Yes.
And Russ Arcand.
No.
No.
Six yeses and eight no's.
Okay, resolution thirty-five twenty-three, Brad, you want to make a motion on that one?
Sure.
Yes, second. Had a second then by Doug. Any uh questions or comments in reference to that? That particular resolution at this time?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
What's the cost? Besides the two hundred thousand, who maintains the, who's the loan officer and all that? So we have some cost that we're going to manage it.
Well, we will have a, this proposal was an initial two hundred thousand dollar, which would be an interest-free loan to the appropriate candidates who were selected. And we would administer that or we would hire possibly, and not hire, but the West Central Regional Planning Commission. Could it help us administer, is that correct, Dan? We could get an outside agency or we could. But the nice thing is, is that it's, you know, on the books, it's a loan, so it's not like we're spending it, we're we're loaning it and then it comes back as a receivable.
And this resolution doesn't actually spend or create that two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar fund. This resolution creates the program that would need to be funded through the budget process for twenty twenty-four, but if it is, then we can at least start creating it and taking those applications.
So it's creating a program, but we don't know the cost of the program.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, but somebody has to pay, but two hour, two hundred thousand a revolving loan fund.
The administrative cost you're looking for.
Administrative cost and stuff, and who's going to do all that? What happens if it's default? I mean, are you setting it up, plan it up that way or how?
There's a default, like referred to our office. But again, this this isn't creating the expenditure, this is creating the program, whether or not it's funded or not.
So come back and we'll know about some costs then, administrated then?
Yeah, I I don't think it would be a high level of administrative overhead, but but you're right.
The banks have four or five people doing it.
They're managing a lot more than two hundred thousand dollars.
Can think of, this is for municipalities.
Yeah.
And not all municipalities are going to look at this and say, I want that money. They're going to have to come with, we have a developer, we have land, we've got this plan. We think we can entice this project to get started. And they're going to have to do a lot themselves. This is a very small thing that is another way to tell that developer, this is just my opinion. We welcome you, we want this project for our community, it meets our needs. In addition to what they may give them and or help them with in terms of a TID district or support, it says that the county's got skin in the game as well. I don't think you're going to find all seven or eight or nine communities coming forward, say, hey, we got something, this, look, look at your communities now, how many have actual development projects that are close to happening? So the questions that might come up is why two hundred thousand dollars? Well, that's a start. I think Mr. Olson said, let's don't get carried away here, let's start with a modest amount of money that could help maximum of seventy thousand per application or community, ten thousand per house. And let's see how it goes, and it may go very slow, but guess what? If it goes very fast, that's good news, isn't it? Maybe we run out of that two hundred thousand dollars. But if it's working, if it's increasing our tax base, if it's bringing businesses and people to come work in those businesses, maybe someday we'll come back and say, let's add another two hundred thousand to this revolving loan fund. Or maybe we don't need to, maybe the revolving part works, you know, and and we take care of. The question that came up, one of the committees is why two hundred thousand? Somebody said, what if you got seventy thousand max, what if you get three, that's two hundred and ten thousand? Well, one, we don't know that it's going to be a maximum, you'd have to be an apartment building with seven units or a development with seven houses or whatever. But it doesn't mean we can't amend it. If you wanted to say two hundred and ten thousand, I don't think that's going to break the bank in in this respect, so. This, and and you guys know, every county in the state is working on this, every state in the country is working on this. And it's not the county's job to provide housing, so to speak, for workforce housing or whatever it is you need. But this is our way to help. And it might just be something to spark, so I applaud the effort, whether or not it's the right thing, that's up for you all to decide.
Another way to look at it is that potentially administrative costs of managing the fund or the loans or anything like that is possibly considerably less than the effect of losing a family or two and the residual effect that that has year over year. So I mean, it's the whole, you know, what's the cost of not doing something? So I mean, I I agree, it's good to know the cost of operating it, but there's other costs to consider too in weighing out the
Any more comments on it?
Just a, just a really quickie, you know, you got the regional bu- business fund and they, they they invented the wheel. Okay, so, uh and that's where we would want to use these experts in setting up, setting up these type of programs and you know what, they even manage them, so you can transfer over that cost over to mutual agreement, yes.
Stimulate some interest. Any more comments, go ahead, Steve.
Vince, I assume we would get a report on this then, so we're updated?
Yes.
Yeah, and you know, my concern with these things is this one city and one contractor grab the money and run. So how do we control, you know, the money that the money gets spread through the county and make sure that one group doesn't, you know, hurt the other group, you might say.
Should this pass, I think the last be it resolved or the second from the last states, that we will create a a method, a rubric of analyzing applications and requests, one, it limits uh how many units and total number of money. Uh but there will be Rubik, we will, in that Rubik, we'll be charged with scoring so that when applications come in, we might say, does it contribute to the tax base? They get a point. Is it for low-income workforce uh housing, that type of thing, they might get a point. Whereas, you know, it's probably going to be geared so that the big lake home on Balsam Lake isn't going to be considered, right? And and you know, if if a community came to us and said, hey, we got a person who wants to build a two million dollar lake home, the community is probably going to say, I don't think that ten thousand dollars is going to help you that much. And they're not going to do it, and we wouldn't score that so that they could do that either. So, yeah, I think this is where we will have to, if we continue, if this is ideas accepted, we will then build that system that says, how are we going to grade? We hope to get applications starting at the end of this year, so that twenty-four could apply. Don't know if we'll get any, however, we have had some discussions and the two reactions we got is, one, in in a couple of communities I've heard, we have something in the works now, we'd love to deal, you know, talk to you. The other reaction I got uh was don't have anything right now, but anything helps. So if it's not helpful, we won't spend the dime. If it is.
Well, any more discussion on it?
Call for the question.
Call the question, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Positively. Resolution thirty-eight.
Motion approved. Do you have a second?
I can, don't have, don't have one, who?
Second, me.
Okay, right. Most men said, was any discussion on it?
Quick history on this, if I may. Transportation. Been brought up over the years, how we could improve our transportation, we conducted a study through the West Central Regional Planning Commission and our A D R C folks. And the conclusion was, we're going to come up with something that will help the margins expand where we need it for those people who need it the most, the elderly, the sick, the veterans, people who need to get the jobs, maybe can't afford to have a car or two cars in their family. The strategy that was approved by different HHS and well, Gigi voted on it too the other day, was to have a uh transportation manager. This manager will uh identify opportunities to arrange for rides for people. Now, the question we ask is, what's this going to cost? The good news is, is we've talked about adding two F T Es here because one, this transportation manager will be funded by a grant. And then the, and eighty percent by a grant. Another position to the reorganization of ARD, A R D E C, A D R C, is going to be hundred percent funded to grant money and the A D R C budget, the twenty percent there. So what we're looking at as a resolution, we have to do F T Es to this committee or to the board. We put it in the budget, but we're up against the wall on a grant request. To get the grant money for this position, we got to get it in by the end of August, I believe. So we need a resolution saying we've approved this position. If the grant does not get approved, the position does not exist, so.
You're you're assuming this is a or you're, I don't know, hoping this is an ongoing grant and not just a one-time?
Yes, one, as I understand it, the A D R C is heavily involved, West Central Regional Planning Commission is heavily involved in in transportation and providing that for the people in need, and so we, this has been available and we will continue to to use it.
And I drafted the resolution with language that if at some point in the future the grant were to go away, the position would would also go away.
Any other questions?
So does, does two go away if we don't get the grant, the budget neutral?
No, the other one is not tied to that grant application, so the other one is currently housed in Burnett. Yeah.
Yeah, so I have flexibility between the two counties with the um budget, and so it's a matter of shifting. We're shifting some operational to personnel from um the Burnett County budget to both.
So it doesn't impact, it's budget neutral for Polk County.
Any other questions? All the question.
I just want to say, I was on that committee and walked through the entire process and I thought this was an incredibly elegant solution to a very persistent problem in our county, especially the people who are in the greatest need. And I really appreciate you stepping forward and figuring this out on how to do this in a way that is so financially brilliant, so I'm, I want to say thank you to you for you and Tanya that's together and came up with, so I think it's great.
Okay, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same side? Passing unanimously. Now we're moving to all the way up to nine. We haven't missed anything. Committee is all. The motion to go and move.
I can make that move.
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Hi Tracy, all in favor? All the same side. All right, now we're talking about the administrator.
Right, would you like me to kind of?
Well, you're probably know more about it than anybody.
Okay, um for my recruitment, the executive committee met this week and discussed how we might proceed initially, and then we're going to pose the question to you all in the committee of the whole as to how you would like to be involved or how you would like to see it happen. We have posted it as of uh the end of last week internally. And very shortly, we will post it externally as well, so that we get a look at all kinds of, a variety of candidates.
Just in the state of Wisconsin externally?
Not necessarily, we would, we would accept candidates from other states.
But you haven't advertised in other states.
Not yet, we have. But when we put it on a a site that maybe it it would, we would target local or the state, but it might get into Minnesota, you might, if it's on LinkedIn, you could see it from all around the country.
Thank you.
Can I interject just briefly? Barbara has a extensive experience in that recruiting and headhunting or whatever they do. I wonder if she might confer with you or vice versa on you, on the two of you getting together and see if her expertise can assist in any manner.
Okay.
Not attached to that at all, I just
Yeah.
spent about twenty years of my life in various versions of that.
Very good.
It's useful, great, and if it's not, ignore me.
Oh, no, that's great.
So you guys draw the conclusion.
So the the thought being, that's kind of bubbled up, is once the the initial resumes come in and applications, Malia and I will sort them, look at them, Malia will take the lead on this, I will stay back other than to assist her. We will then present it to the executive committee to get some agreement as to how many bubble up to the top. Obviously, there were some that won't be qualified and so on. What the executive committee was asking earlier this week was would you all want to be involved with interviewing, say, the top, at least the top three candidates? I know when I went through this, I think they split you up into groups of five and each candidate went around and and had, they had interviews with it, so that all fifteen of you get to see the candidates that are at the top of the list. That's what we leave up to you now, in case you say, I got a better idea, or if you want to do one-on-one interviews with every candidate, you know, or I know that in the past, we've also had experience of taking someone to a social setting and having like a cocktail session where you can see them socially. While I think that is sometimes good, I think we have to be very careful with getting fifteen, sixteen of us around there. And it's, it's kind of less coordinated, it can be, it can pose problems.
What if we flipped it to them and said those top three candidates, how would you present to the board, you know, your, your case, you know, rather than us having to have them jump over fifteen hurdles, maybe they can do it more efficiently by.
Have them come here and present to all fifteen of them?
Not even, I'm not saying the method, like come here, video, whatever. But if they wanted to present in their way, you know, how they were going to pass that to us, just a thought.
You mentioned LinkedIn? So so that there's no requirement to post it on like USA Jobs or the county, the state jobs?
It'll be, it'll be on multiple sites, I think that was just for.
Yeah, I'm not.
Is it going to push, is like LinkedIn going to push you over to one general site to complete the application? The, you know, like a, like, like USA Jobs, if you did a government job before they you, it'll be posted on Monster, but it pushes you over to USA Jobs and then you have to follow their path for applying for that jobs with the K S A's. You know, the, the credentials, the, everything that would be required for that job is managed through this.
We do have our H H R director who's experienced in this and and we're going to do local papers or regional papers, uh we're going to choose websites that we think would target the people that we feel would be good fits or be most interested or adequate. So I, and and I apologize, if I say LinkedIn or what, I it's, I don't know the details of all those, I let my H R department take the lead on that, but they will.
Like the Wisconsin County Association?
Right.
Okay.
Professional association.
Right.
I think we, I hope we learned a lesson in the last ten years by our own experience.
I know staff learns the lesson.
Say more, please.
If you can.
It's an art.
It's terrible.
It's an art.
Let me just ask the question then, do you like the idea of the executive committee being the first line of defense, so to speak, to say, let's sort these things out and see if we see a gap and take the top ones? Is that a good place?
Yeah, I think so. Third job.
Good idea.
Okay.
Massive, fair, equitable. Yeah.
And then, okay, Mr. You want the job, I know.
You gotta sue.
It's only part-time, so it's not that big of a deal. So if we believe we have qualified internal candidates, what are we going outside for?
I agree one hundred percent. Thank you, Brad.
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, why aren't we looking internally first? We talk all about, all the time about how we have great people. And now, why don't we see if there is somebody that this board thinks is great people without going outside and looking for somebody else? Because do we not want to promote from within if it's the county administrator or a, a, anywhere else? And, and so I don't, I guess I don't understand where we're looking outside. Now, if we, if we get one internal candidate, maybe we should look outside. But if we get two or three, why are we looking outside of, of here?
That was my point. Did we learn a lesson?
It's a perception, it's a perception of
That is a very good question. And, and if, if I could answer it this way, yes. I think there's been a preference throughout the board that I've talked to that said, we got great people, let's look internally first. Doesn't hurt to put out something to say what else is out there. Would, one, we don't know exactly who's gonna come in from internally yet. And two, what if we got somebody who clearly stands out? That's one option. The other option is by bringing, putting recruiting on like this, what I hope happens is we get five or ten really good people express interest in Polk County. They may not be the people we want for county administrator, but they might be talent that we could use in this organization. We keep it in mind.
There you go.
So that's one of the reasons. We're gonna, I think the hope is you get the best person. I hope it's internal. You guys may feel that way too. But I feel an obligation to say we should probably look for the best candidate.
In the professional world of HR and recruiting, it's no different than competition in private business or anything like that. When you increase competition, you increase the quality of the product being put in front of you. So if a person internally, we've communicated that our preference is to recruit and, and build up that way. We can set that expectation, you know, all we want and abide by that. Doesn't change the fact that when you give somebody, somebody to run against, you're gonna up their game.
But since this is a committee of the whole, I think it, it's fair to say, it's your decision. You, you can have an interview process or you could toss coins. I mean, it, it's your decision that you get to make the way you all want to make it.
Those of us who were here last time remember how bad that was.
Yes.
I think we actually already started the process. And I think we started it in executive. And then I think at our last meeting, we said, you know, why should we really be just taking it? I mean, maybe, maybe the board has a different idea than the executive committee just taking it on. So we said in executive, we said, let's bring it back to the board. And ask the board, do you want the executive committee screen the candidates and maybe down to two or three? And then bring you the candidates and say, how do you want to interview them? We're not gonna bring you one person and say, this is the one you're gonna hire. I mean, or I mean, does the whole board want to be involved in the entire process? I mean, that, that's what we just, that executive felt. We shouldn't just take it, the responsibility and take it. The board should direct us, if that's what they choose.
Board has a final vote.
Absolutely. But I mean, it's gonna be pretty tough to put fifteen people together every time you're gonna interview or candidate. So do you want the executive to, to get it down to a number?
I thought, I thought that's what we're intending to.
Think that's the way we've always done it.
The executive committee bring candidates to the county board for selecting the one they want.
Are we able to have any kind of low-touch involvement in when you narrow it down to say the top three? Is there any simple option for us to be involved and, and just give the thumbs up on it? Or is it, does it have to be super involved, like we're present?
Well, I think what you would, we would end up doing is presenting them to the entire board and it's up to them to tell us who they are.
The only, the only advantage I see to being involved in that first narrowing down portion would be to see if any other sets of eyes see something valuable that we missed in somebody who didn't make the cut, just to make sure that that first cut doesn't miss something.
Well, okay, I guess I'm not supposed to comment too much.
You're the committee of the whole.
Oh, that's good. How did we get there? But anyway. If, if we're sitting with, with fifteen people, interviewing fifteen people, we've got to consider the fact that our administrator is leaving in January and we won't accomplish anything before that happens. We're gonna be without our administrator because there's not, we're not gonna be able to make a decision. Fifteen of us are not gonna make a decision on other than bring us, you've got to have confidence in your executive committee to come up with logical, feasible good selections to present to you. To bring in fifteen people or ten or whatever number there might be to interview. I mean, the last, I've seen some disastrous ways that we went about doing this. And it doesn't seem to be getting much better, but except we lucked out this.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I can make a comment.
Flip of the coin, that one.
Good cover.
We did luck out. But anyway.
Our time. I remember when we turned down all the candidates that we interviewed and we re-advertised. So, you know, that's
That's happened, yes.
Well, I think I think we gotta make a decision how we're gonna do this, but I think that we need a general consensus on letting the executive committee move forward and and see if they can come up with some good candidates to present to the entire county board. That was the intention, I thought. Russ, that's what we kind of concluded at the executive meeting last time. And hoped that the committee as a whole would agree.
So I, so one other thought then with that, if it goes through. We all got the job description, is it new? So we should kind of get a red line of the old one. Everybody should read it, see if we gotta add or subtract.
It's pretty statutory. The job of the administrator is outlined in statute. And so I don't
But you can still add some things and take away it says in here. I mean, if I'm reading it right.
Yeah, you can.
Marginal duties, is that in statute?
It's correct.
If you want to get in
Is it?
Into, certainly could.
Okay.
You know, I've been around a little bit and I, I got a fair idea of what the administrator does. And I think I could pick out an individual that would meet those qualifications in my mind. And I hope the rest of you at least have that kind of a conclusion so far.
But it is our responsibility as a board, that's the one person we hire, fire. So I mean, we should look at, at the job description too.
Well, I don't disagree with that, you know.
That's just a thing we should have out there.
Went to administration.
Yeah.
And scrutinize it pretty well at that point. But anyway. Yes. Go ahead.
So what are we looking at for a timeline here? I mean, what are we hoping to accomplish by a certain time? Are we doing the one we want to candidate? I mean, I know that's the, the whole intent, but what I'm getting at is before we go to outside candidates, I truly hope that we're going with the internal focus being the main focus. We have time. We're not up against a huge clock. It's not like, you know, we're losing Vince tomorrow. We do have time. So I mean, we need to, you know, we need to take this serious. This is a serious position. There's a lot of good candidates, I'm sure, within the county. We just need to do our due diligence. We need to make sure that this piece of paper with the job description is not discriminating somebody because it's not a certain person's choice. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's why I guess the concern is there so that we're not not crossing that. We've, we've been hit with some pretty, that last go-around. We're all a little gun-shy. We're all a little, you know, we don't need that, we don't need that publicity. I mean, that was, that was brutal.
Well, if you want a timeline, I, I, and I'll just give you some ballpark. I think in another week and a half, we'll have all the internal post, people who are interested internally here, we'll, we'll be able to sort those. So the next executive committee, I think they'll have a list of if not a complete list, a good start and maybe just another week or two of allowing more people to post if, if we want it. But I think by the next executive committee, you'll have a pool of good candidates.
There you go.
I mean, do we as a board tonight make the decision that if there's not enough internal candidates that apply and that are vetted through the executive, then we give them permission to post? Just so it's not an automatic for outside?
For all.
Yeah. You'd have to define it, I would think.
I think again, we've, we've already gone past that. We're past that. With, and that's why I say, went through it in executive, they agreed to post internally first. So right now, it's not posted externally, it's posted internally. But to be fair, we're posting externally too. I mean, they're, the person could be out there. So that ball is rolling. I mean, I, I don't think we can stop that.
Russ, is it reasonable to ask that you bring three candidates? So if we only have two internal that really are qualified, that you'd bring a third? So at least at that point, we're bringing three good candidates to the board to review?
You take one from outside and two?
If we have to. If we don't have three internal, but we only have two internal that are qualified, is it reasonable to say we should have at least one outside? So at least the board has been brought three candidates to choose from?
And if not, we would make one in, an interim? At that point, I mean,
Well, my question is, are we gonna trust the executive committee to do their job or are we not? And so to me, with the understanding that the, that, that there's a preference, if you can hire internally, we will. And that if we find a superstar that comes flying in from, I don't know, Des Moines, we consider that. But to me, that's the question is to say, do we trust that they will do their job or don't we? And I would say, let's trust them. To bring us three people, the best qualified with the preference to internal if possible.
And then all fifteen people vote? That's, that's a story.
You're welcome to sit in the executive committee anytime.
That's true. Yeah, even a closed session.
If you have any doubts about their capability or the, which direction they're going, you can just sit in there and
So that would be your option too, Ryan, if you were, wanted to get in. You can sit in the exec committee and you can certainly talk to members after.
I certainly didn't mean to make it a, but I think that's fair. I wanted to insert myself into all of it, because if anything, I'm much more on the train of let's let executive do their thing.
Yep.
Then we need some direction from the committee as a whole as to how we should proceed. How do we do that, Malia Malone?
You can do it by consensus, saying that the executive committee is gonna take the lead and, and bring the most qualified.
General statement then saying that
Jay, why don't we do it under number ten?
Yeah.
Yeah. During the committee of the whole, go back into session.
I don't think we need a formal vote on letting the executive committee do what it, I mean, I suppose you could.
Can committee of the whole make motions and vote?
No, but you can have a consensus. I kind of speak now or forever hold your peace?
As I say, I'm not gonna lie, I don't know how to establish consensus.
I'm moving.
Sounds like a good idea.
Out of closed session. Committee of a whole and move back into open session.
I'll second that.
All in, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign?
We gotta move on.
Now we've got to come up with some, some direction. We're out of the committee as a whole. We need a direction by consensus or by action. I don't know.
I make a motion that we vet the executive, do we need to vet the candidates for the position prior to bringing to the board?
Second.
Need more discussion on that? I think we've had that pretty well. All in favor? All the same sign, okay. That's accomplished. I don't figure out where we are.
Why Mr. Chairman's calling?
We've been moving this thing around. We're on twelve. Confirmation of appointments, maybe the county board already accomplished. Administrator, you got any appointments as you?
No appointments.
See, we're all moving right along. County Board Chairman's report, I think we've, we've discussed it pretty thoroughly on everything that I've been involved in the last month. So I'll continue on to the administrator's report.
Did you have something?
Just a couple of quick points. Budget details can need to be worked out. Hats off to our staff and the directors. They've done a great job. They've been battling to, to meet the commitments of their divisions, but yet, under the constraints of what's happening with different, you know, inflation, healthcare costs raises that are gonna be coming as a result. So they're doing a great job. So September is the month we're gonna start introducing to you now in the committees, projects, programs, major expenditure, so you can take a look at it, provide some feedback. Input. And then, of course, this board has the opportunity then for the final presentation in October to make any amendments or change that as we go. So we are making progress on there. Don has an excellent job keeping us on a timeline that's ahead of the schedule that we've had in the past. So good job there. Also, the 2022 audit is being finalized. General Government got a, a, an executive summary just a few days ago. The final report will be completed and they will be presenting at the 2022, or they, I'm sorry, September County Board. The good news is, I'll, I'll just give you a preview. We will come in under budget or able to put more money into our general fund. But, you know, that's the good news. So we'll, we'll get that in September. In addition to hiring a new county administrator, we're in search of a new zoning administrator, Jason Jesus. As you know, most of you know, has taken a big promotion to go down to St. Croix County. Wish him the best. In the meantime, we have contracted with MSA Consulting Group for individuals who are zoning administrators who will help us in some of those CUP, BOA for zoning amendment situations. They will be able to help do that. And, and we do have some interviews lined up. So hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we'll have things more solidified there.
Good.
May I ask a question? Where are we, where are we with the planner?
We are also interviewing for the planner.
Okay.
But, okay. Any announcement from supervisors? Like to
Mr. Chair.
Say anything, go ahead.
I just want to do a quick update on a couple of things. I attended six steering committees. I apologize that I had to leave at the last meeting. Thank everybody for their Thanksgiving or Thanksgiving or family matters. But there are two things that really stand out. I got six resolutions that I presented and they all got passed unanimously. One went back to the executive board for a little detailing and that was the one that, I don't know, while you know, in the state budget, the nursing homes. There's, in the last year, there were 14 nursing homes closed up for one thing in the state of Wisconsin. And I believe there's somewhere around 24 left. And the budget approved about the same amount, but they done a huge change in, in, in calculating applied. What it basically announced is, is the nursing home that was losing money, they pretty much refunded them at the expense of the ones that were breaking even. Like, for instance, Lucine County received $81 million and Polk County lost $700,000, which is almost a death knell to us. So we had a resolution, I presented, and that's the one that went to the state for some tweaking that it should be, the calculation should be more fair and, and help all the counties. That was number one that I was happy about. And then the other one was resolution from our county, the rural EMTs, fire departments and that, especially along the border, like from Bayfield all along the smaller counties. The fire departments, EMTs are merging. Some of them are just going out of business. And so there was a resolution from Polk County to fund $33 per capita in, in their, in their district. For that money to come either out of the budget surplus that's existing now or if we have a budget surplus in this coming year. So those are, those are the two big ones that I hope we get. They'll, they'll be presented at the legislative. They will both go to the, to the legislative branch. Well, I guess one thing, first of all, they'll be presented at our, at our state meeting in September. Then they go to the legislature. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if I didn't miss anything.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
I am die.